Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones. Be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. And then go ahead and call this meeting in order on a City of Grand Terrace Council meeting Tuesday, January 9, 2024. The invocation be given by Pastor Mark Matthews from Grandview Baptist Church, and the pledge of allegiance will be given by the mayor pro tem. So please stand.
Let's pray. Father, running a city is hard work, and I pray now for those that are a part of this city government that you would grant them wisdom and guide them in their decision-making, especially the council and the mayor. And then the support staff who are behind the scenes, a lot of times we pray for them as well. And then the fire and the police and the manager of the city. All of these fine people are your servants being used by you to guide this great city. And Lord, we love Grand Terrace. That's why we're here, and that's why we are coming before you to pray for all that are here in Jesus's name. Amen?
Thank you, Pastor Mark and Mayor Pro Tem. Madam City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez Robles?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. So item A, reordering of or additional or removal of any items from the agenda?
I'd like to remove item number seven, please.
Request to move item seven. Any other items removed? Okay, we'll remove item seven. All right. Public comment, item B. This opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to question arise during the public comment or may request the matter be agendized for future meetings. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, resident Christina Phelps.
Ms. Phelps?
Hello, my name is Christina Phelps, and I'm coming to you regarding the special events permit fee. Recently, we decided to start bringing more market nights, farmers market to the City of Grand Terrace. But we were aware when we were filing for a recent event that we're going to have is that the price went up from $310 to $1,230. That's a $920 difference for us as an event organizer to put on. Plus, there's a deposit, plus we have to have an event insurance. So we're already looking at $2,000 before the event starts, and that's a fee we're not able to pass on to our community members. My goal is to have the community involved in the, you know, like women's club. They can come in and they can do their raffles, local businesses come and attend. And the whole point of it is just to bring like a mom and pop, like a crochet person that's coming in to pay a small minimal fee, so that way it doesn't break the bank. And my concern is, so I had something prepared, sorry. I've been a volunteer in Grand Terrace since 1997. In that time, I have come to love the community and appreciate what the city has to offer. I believe in that there is more that we can offer our community. I have been privileged to be part of past events such as Community Days, Live at Grand Terrace, and the Country Fair. There are a lot more possibilities that can happen in the city. The special event fee alone is something that needs to be addressed. I have gathered information from neighboring communities for comparison. We need to revisit the current cost of our special event application. Such cities surrounding us, our City of Colton, their fee is $150. City of Redlands is $170. High Grove is $100. City of Riverside is $100. City of Highland, there is no charge for a special event permit. Moreno Valley is $329 based on 250,000 community residents. Rialto is 338.90. Fontana is just $26. City of Corona is $16. So the reason I'm bringing this to you all is that there's a huge possibility for more community events in the area. We understand the living increases have happened recently after COVID. That's understandable. For a $920 increase to have an event in the City of Grand Terrace is a lot to ask for just somebody who wants to put on a farmer's market. And you know my reputation in the city. I've worked very hard to bring wonderful events, and I hope that you can have a discussion about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps, and please stick around for the rest of the meeting. Okay, any other?
No more public comment.
You got one behind you?
President Robert Sanchez?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening on Barton Road with the new residential facility that's there now. I know I've seen a lot of stuff on the social media. It's the J.C. Wallace Residential Living. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm sure you've seen the traffic there. The clientele has very changed on that street, and it's just almost like a black eye to the City of Grand Terrace. What's the solution? I don't know. I work in mental health, so I work with a lot of the clients that stay in houses like that. But what I'm seeing is people in our community kind of getting threatened by some of the residents that are in there. People are scared to walk down that street. We're seeing a lot more trash up and down Barton Road. I'm not saying it's all coming from this residential facility, but they have to be held accountable. You know, I don't know if we can go to them. I've seen the police have been there a lot. I've seen somebody supposedly get threatened or assaulted with a bat. Again, this is all from what I'm seeing on social media. I just thought I'd make you guys aware of it. It does seem like it's kind of taken Grand Terrace down a bit in regards to the citizens here in the area. So just wanted to share a little bit of comment on that. So thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
No more public comment.
Did you fill out the proper paperwork?
I did not.
Come on down and speak and then fill out the paperwork after you're done. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is my first time coming here, so don't know the protocol. But just what the gentleman was speaking to, I also wanted to bring up that concern in Grand Terrace. My husband, the other day, not only have I seen all of these issues in Grand Terrace, but he went to one of our local gas stations to get gas, and one of the, somebody from that place was there and was waiting for him to get out of his car. My husband was just trying to get gas, and the guy was physically altered, had an altercation with him and pulled out a knife and almost stabbed him. Luckily, my husband does carry a concealed carry permit and was able to protect himself. But if he didn't have that, who knows what would have happened to my husband just a couple of days ago. So I see a lot of these things on social media popping up about women and children. You know, same thing, they're waiting for them to come out and ask them, out of their cars, and ask them for money. And I get there is an issue with homelessness, and I try to support and give, you know, money. But when it comes to your family almost being stabbed, it raises even, you know, more than just, you know, something needs to be done in Grand Terrace because it's not just about our city going down. It's about people being safe, and I would hate for it to be on the news where somebody, you know, loses their life over something in this community. So just wanted to bring that to your awareness because it just seems to get worse and worse, and I would hate for that to happen to somebody in our community.
Okay, ma'am, what's your name?
My name is Monica Helton.
Okay. Quick question, did your husband call 911 after this incident?
Absolutely. Called the sheriff, spoke to them. They were actually able to apprehend the man. And while he was, while they found him, he was also being physically with some lady in Stater Brothers parking lot. So, I mean, thankfully, he was able to, he got the number of the sheriffs because the sheriff called him, and he was able to call while he saw the man harassing somebody else in Stater Brothers and was able to help the lady as well.
So this man was positively identified as coming from the Wallace house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
No, that's it.
Yes. Sorry, yes, resident Bobby Forbes?
Ms. Forbes?
Good evening. I apologize for being late. Bobby Forbes, Grand Terrace resident. J.C. Wallace is a problem for our community. I called the sheriff. I just had an incident at the bottom of the hill. That's why I was late because there was a domestic disturbance in the street between a homeless couple throwing their cart and everything down in the street. It was violent. They were beating each other up. There are situations down here. I heard that there was an issue under the bridge with a machete and some guy beating, killing their dogs or beating their dogs, slicing the dogs. They have a lot of dogs down there. There's stuff going on that we don't see. There's stuff going on that I don't want to see, but I know what's happening here. People, I talked to some of the homeless people. They tell me that the word is out that Grand Terrace is a safe place to be. So they're coming here. The word is on the streets. I don't interact with many, but there's about three that I talked to, two of which are from Grand Terrace, grew up here, and they're now 30 years old on the street. So I'd like to know what the program is. Do we still have the program with the sheriff coming in weekly? Whatever that program was, it was $25,000 or so every six months. It kept getting renewed. Is that active? It needs to be more active. And I personally need to see for my business and for the residents and our own safety. I'm by myself all the time, and I have people knocking on my window asking for money. I see stuff, there's a man coming from J.C. Wallace that's in a wheelchair. He stops in the middle of Barton Road almost every time that he's out. I'm worried about him getting hit and the person that's going to hit him because he just sits there. He's from J.C. Wallace. I see him go up and down the driveway. And something needs to happen besides your periodic meetings going in there because I don't really think they care. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Alex Howard? I'm short, so I may have to tippy toe here. Good morning, good evening, council members. I'm here, just like a lot of the community members are, to talk about the homeless problem that seems to have gotten worse over the last six weeks especially. On New Year's Eve, I had a homeless person, also a transient person, come into my driveway and use the restroom between my cars that my husband then had to clean up. But I ask as I come here that we, as a community, approach it with empathy and compassion because I'm, I'd be willing to bet that any one of us have been at a point where we're sitting across the table with our spouse trying to figure out how to pay bills. We've had demons that we don't know how to fight. And so, but coming to it with compassion and empathy doesn't mean foregoing the safety and the feeling of security that the community members have. I think that there are programs that can be enacted, and I'm not asking for all of the solutions from you. I'm not asking that you look at the community to say, we'll come to us with all the solutions. We don't necessarily know what's out there, but I think if the board, you guys come up with options, at least the community can see that we're making an effort. We don't just have two sheriffs who are, you know, sitting in a parking lot because they're doing a whole lot more than that, and I know that. But I don't think the rest of the community knows that, and I think in order to renew a feeling of safety and security within our community, we need the visibility, and we need to start the conversation from the top down. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No more public comment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close. Public comment. Item D, consent calendar. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and noncontroversible. They'll be acted upon. The city council, one time without discussion, any council member, staff member, or citizen may remove the item on the consent calendar for discussions. We have any removals from item consent calendars? Is there any public comment for the consent calendar?
No public comment.
Counsel, do you have any questions on the consent calendar? Do I have a motion for a consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar in full.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Public hearing adoption of revised ordinance, chapter 12.08, Street Exclamation. Who's giving that one? I don't have it on my notes. Ms. Tillman, I'm on up. You're the next contestant.
Good evening, council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst, Public Works Department. The staff report before you supports the following vision. Goal number two, maintain public safety. The city introduced ordinance number 64 incorporating chapter 12.08 into the Grand Terrace municipal code. It aimed to establish and govern excavations, trenchings, and trenchings within the public right-of-way by project applicants, residents, and public utility companies. Subsequent amendments occurred in 1990 with the ordinance number 125, specifically addressing cash deposits and regulations related to public service companies. In 2005, ordinance number 218 was enacted, imposing fines for noncompliance with the established regulations. And finally, in 2020, ordinance number 330 was introduced granting the city council authority over fees, deposits, associated with excavations and trenching within the public right-of-way. The intention of the proposed amendment is to streamline content, update language to align with the prevailing standards, remove Attachment A specifications for construction within the right-of-way, update existing pavement moratorium, and hopefully the adoption of the ordinance. We've added new definitions relevant to our existing projects, including slurry seal and street overlay. A slurry seal is a protective makeover for roads. It's a mix of asphalt emulsion, fine sand, and water that gets spread over the existing pavement, making the roads look better, helping it last longer, where it can last anywhere from three to seven years, depending on conditions. Street overlay, this is typically includes the grinding to smooth the surface and resurface the road, usually greater than a half an inch in thickness, and usually will last between 10 to 15 years. We're also changing the term excavation permit to encroachment permit. As in Public Works, we only have one primary permit that's used. And then at the end of the chapter, we have Attachment A specifications for construction within the right-of-way, and staff is requesting the removal of this section as the city currently adheres to San Bernardino County specs, the Green Book standard by Caltrans, because we don't have an established standard of our own. We currently use San Bernardino counties. Foremost, contractors are to follow the current standards, guidelines, and specs as directed by the city engineer. Speaking of city engineer, approximately two years ago, we hired an engineer with the primary focus on improving our streets and sidewalks. During his tenure, he has successfully resurfaced major thoroughfares and plans to extend this initiative to additional residential streets in the future. And he is expecting to have a project begin next month, going into March. The new section, 12.08330, is being proposed as new pavement moratorium. It's designed to mitigate pavement degradation and uphold street structural integrity. It aims to ensure a smooth surface for all transportation modes and minimize negative visual impacts. In section 12.08320, new pavement, the current moratorium specifies that no excavation should occur on newly paved surfaces within six months of completion except for emergency repairs. Whereas the proposed moratorium seeks to enhance planning for utility owners by providing a minimum of six months' notice for upcoming projects. Additionally, it introduces a restriction on excavations, trenching, or overlay on streets newly paved for five years and slurry sealed streets for three years, ensuring the preservation of the road's infrastructure, with a continued exception for emergency repairs. Some of those repairs, excuse me, some of those exceptions can be made with the public works or engineer's approval, and that's based on hazards to the public, utility upgrades to improve service quality or accommodate technological advancements, infrastructure expansion should the city undergo significant growth, and there's a need to accommodate new development or support increased demand. Staff recommends the following. Introduce and conduct the first reading by title only of the proposed ordinance amending chapter 12.08, Street Excavations. And if approved, staff will return for a second reading and the adoption 30 days later. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you for your report. I just want to confirm that the proposed amendments incorporate the encroachment permit process.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that hasn't changed.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Has there been any consideration for the highly trafficked areas like Mount Vernon, Barton, our north-south, primarily our north-south streets, that we would prohibit any encroachment upon those roads? And that the only way that they'd be able to excavate is to bore? I've brought that up before. I feel like it's very necessary because, you know, a lot of communities have a boring requirement. And yes, it does cost more money. That's not our problem. The bottom line is, is that we don't want to have a 50-year-old problem, and we've got a lot of them. Our roads have been killed by a lot of traffic, a lot of heavy traffic, as well as a lot of penetrations. And you can't fix them. I don't care how far you pave them. They just won't stay, and you certainly can't slurry them.
Understood. I don't know if that has been explored yet, but that's something I can definitely address with our city engineer and maybe present back to you.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's deal with the roads. It's not on this agenda. And because I hear that the city isn't doing our job, in which a lot of staff does, I mean, a lot of public doesn't realize the paving on Michigan by the water company. Do we have any timeframe for that?
Should we, actually, they're planning on doing their paving in the spring, once the rain stops. The water company is extending some of their lines from between some of their pumps in the building. And it just didn't make sense to pave a, to pave a section, have the water company tear it up, and then repave it a couple of years later. So we're working with them. They should be doing, completing their work in the spring. We're actually going to end up working with them on widening Michigan, too. If you get down to the intersection, there's a little stand pipe that kind of sticks out. It's dangerous for walking. We'll put it in curb and gutter between the, between the RV place and the water company. And then once they're completed with their work and doing the widening of curb and gutter, then we'll come back and pave that. So it should be maybe by the end of the summer, by the time we get that done.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other questions? Councilmember Henderson?
Following up on Mr. Wilson's comments, which I think should be strongly considered. I know that we are introducing the ordinance tonight. If, in fact, the council wanted to take action in conjunction with the comments made by Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, could we direct staff to include that amendment in the proposal that we're considering tonight and bring it back at a future meeting for introduction of the ordinance?
Yes, if the council was inclined to modify or add to the ordinance, staff can take that direction tonight, and we would renotice it and bring it back for introduction at a future meeting.
Mr. Wilson, sir, if you were willing to make a recommendation regarding your comments earlier, I would second it.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. As a matter of fact, in relation to the jack and bore, there is a section right now, let's see, I'm looking at HH, Section HH, and part of the justifications about getting exemptions, there was a section, it's a justification, I don't know why the work was, or, I'm sorry, E, there it is, justification as to why the work cannot be completed via jack or bore or directional drill method. I don't want them to justify it. I don't want them to do it unless they do jack and bore on those roads. I understand that we have a lot of collectors, and we have a lot of, you know, cul-de-sacs and a lot of individual, you know, local streets that probably could stand a little bit of change here and there, depending on whether we have water leaks or whatever else. But I just don't think we can justify, given the fact that we end up with such a heavy quantity of traffic, and we have no help from the state or anybody else that seems to, you know, to govern this, that we need to protect ourselves. And we've got to quit looking at things on a 20-year basis, or a 10-year, or whatever. It's got to be a 50 or better. And I say that having been here for 44 years. Anyway, so I would like to move that we include a language in this rewrite that creates a, in effect, a de facto moratorium on any excavation and repaving on Mount Vernon, Barton, Michigan, and Observation, as being the main north-south streets, and anything else the city engineer finds necessary to bore and jack only from this point forward, so that we don't in here at all this cost that we have absolutely no reimbursement for from anybody, including State of Brothers. That would be my motion.
I second Mr. Wilson's motion.
Okay, we have, excuse me, first, a second before we begin that. Do we have any public comment?
We forgot to open the public comment there.
I know, that's why I'm asking now.
Okay, no public comment.
Hey, we're a little late. It's the new year. Too many Christmas cookies. Okay. Adrian, you have anything to add to that?
No, I was going to remind you about the public comment.
Okay. So we have a motion, a revised motion, and a second. Are we ready for a vote on this, or, say, attorney, do we need to do anything else on here, or just?
No, I, the only question I would ask staff is how long it would take to bring the ordinance back with that additional language, if you have a specific timeline, because if you do, we could continue it to a specified date. If not, we could continue it to a date uncertain, and then we notice it.
The first meeting in February, we should be able to bring this back.
Okay. So we need a vote, then?
Yes. I'm motioning to continue the item with the direction provided by the mayor.
Okay.
To the first meeting in February.
First meeting in February would be appropriate.
All right, everybody got it? So please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tillman. So item, we skipped seven, item eight, Community Benefit Fund grant awarded to Grand Terrace Foundation to grant terrace youth an amount of $2,000 presented by Christine Clayton.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received from the Foundation of Grand Terrace for Youth, they submitted an application for the Community Benefit Fund, $4,000 for scholarships, and $2,000 for senior-related activities, such as prom, grad night, and senior inspiration dinner. The maximum allowed is $2,000 per organization per fiscal year. The recommendation is to deny the grant, as the city has a fellowship for Grand Terrace High School seniors to earn up to $320 to pay for their senior-related activities. And Kristi Bowle is here to speak on behalf of the foundation.
Good evening. I also brought a revised application, because I noticed my error in there, too. So I'll give that to you after I speak. Am I still limited to the three minutes? Because I'll be fast.
Well, we don't want to be here forever.
No. Maybe three point two. No, I'll be fast. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city officials, and Grand Terrace community members. My name is Kristi Bowle. I'm a resident and co-founder of GTHS Senior Legacy with Chastity Kotze, which is a subcommittee of the Foundation of Grand Terrace for Youth, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) entity within our community. GTHS Senior Legacy is a committee whose primary goal is to provide some of our most vulnerable high school students, seniors, with the opportunity to partake in memorable, yet very expensive, senior events that, without our help, would not be able to attend. Senior Legacy is something that is very near and dear to my heart and brought to life after the COVID-19 pandemic. The class of 2021 was not able to have a normal senior year due to the shutdown. This was unacceptable to a brave and tenacious group of parents, and they decided to create a memorable year for those seniors in spite of the shutdown. From that, my husband's company, Bowle Electric, was given an opportunity to donate to the cause, and we gladly accepted. Later, we found out that our donation provided prom for a senior that was doing distant learning from their car. He did not have an office, room, desk, or dining room table to do his daily studies from home. This situation deeply affected me emotionally, and we were blessed to be part of creating a special memory for an individual that didn't have normal luxuries of a home, but was determined to finish his senior year and graduate. He deserved a memorable event, such as prom, even though he didn't have the means to buy a ticket himself. From that very eye-opening opportunity for us, Senior Legacy was created the following year. We returned to school as normal, but the heartbreaking reality of students missing out on senior events due to financial hardship or other tragic circumstances remained. Going back to school didn't change that reality for many students. My goal as the founder of Senior Legacy was to continue to make those memories possible for students that wouldn't otherwise be able to participate due to financial or personal hardship. Last year alone, with the help of our generous community and sponsors, we provided deserving seniors six grad night tickets, six prom tickets, three pair of senior inspiration dinner tickets for their parents, three yearbooks, a cap and gown, and seven scholarships. Total amount gifted to the class of 2023 was over $5,000. This committee goes through a rigorous process to determine the beneficiaries of such tickets and scholarships. We do surveys, meetings with faculty, staff, and teachers, and then decide as a group who the beneficiaries will be. This process is done without knowing any names or student ID, so that the family's anonymity can remain intact. I ask that you please continue to help us help these deserving students and families create lasting memories despite the financial hardships or tragic situations they may be facing. This is not a handout, but a hand up to help those students remain positive and give, if just one opportunity, to celebrate their senior year. I ask, I humbly ask for your approval of our Community Benefits Fund application in the amount of $2,000 for the GTHS class of 2024.
Thank you. Is there any public comment before we ask questions?
No public comment.
Okay, I have a, does the council have a question? Councilman Robles?
How much, how much of the foundation funds have gone to this program last year and then this year?
From the foundation, in excess of Senior Legacy? We do not combine our funds. The foundation has their own gifting of two scholarships that they give. These scholarships mentioned here was funds raised strictly for Senior Legacy. So we are a subcommittee of them, but our funds are...
Well, the reason I ask is because we've gotten from the foundation, not you, but from the foundation people that were involved in prior years, even to provide refreshments for the memorial, the veterans. And one year I asked if they'd provide their IRS giving form, so we, you know, we could know what their financial position was, and then they withdrew the application, because the foundation was supposed to be a way for the community to raise money, and some people gave chunks of money that could be, interest could be brought up on. And so I just would like to see more transparency on what the foundation has and what resources they're putting towards the initiatives that their committees are coming up with.
I understand, and the foundation itself as a whole is an endowment fund, but since then, to my knowledge, Renee Walker is the president of the larger foundation, which houses the Veterans Committee, the Youth Foundation, several different entities, and we, Senior Legacy, are part of the Youth Foundation Subcommittee. So the foundation itself is an endowment fund, which, to my understanding, we have broken away from that and created our own 501(c)(3), and Renee will have all that information. But Senior Legacy is but a piece of the Foundation of Inland Empire, which is Foundation of Grand Terrace, which is Foundation of Youth, then Senior Legacy. So we do our own treasurer's report and everything else. So that's how I'm aware of how much we have received for Senior Legacy and how much we have spent.
But not from the foundation?
Not from the foundation. I don't have anything to do with, like, the Veterans, while the Freedom Committee, or the Lions Club, or any of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My question involves the fellowship program that is administered by Mr. Bolowitz, our city manager. And my understanding is that approximately $310 or $320 can be earned by the same individuals that you are serving and others. And to my knowledge, Mr. Bolowitz, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but I, only one individual has taken advantage, worked the 20 hours and earned $310 or $320 for activities that are similar to what you are describing this evening. It seems to me, at least, that strong consideration of the fellowship program would obviate the need for community benefits grant at this point in time. So I'd like to have you respond to that, if you could.
Absolutely. While I believe in the program that Mr. Bolowitz has formed for children to come in and do an internship and raise money, that is something that, while it's an admirable quality, and I think it's a wonderful avenue for students, Senior Legacy is not about, we are a giving program. We are not out there to give a handout to these students. None of these students come to us and say, hey, I can't afford senior prom or something, because in which case I would say, hey, you know what? City of Grand Terrace has a wonderful internship program, and you can go and earn money. These are students that don't have those opportunities. They perhaps are watching their siblings after school. They're doing their homework. Maybe they're not getting good grades. They are, they're not just looking for, to get a free prom ticket. This is something that we, as a community, are giving back to say, you're the little guy. You maybe have not had a good year. You have financial difficulties. Last year, we gave someone a prom ticket whose father was going through cancer treatment, who is still going through cancer treatment. I wouldn't even suggest that I go to him and say, you know what? Your dad is going through cancer treatment. I know it's really not in the cards right now for you to afford a $200 prom ticket. Why don't you go down and do an internship program? This is giving, giving back to these students that so badly deserve this. The gentleman that I was speaking of, that we, Bowle Electric, provided a prom ticket for him, he wouldn't have had those, even the spirit to go and get an internship at the city. This is something that we provided to them as a gift to say, we appreciate you, you're having a hard time, and we're going to provide a way for you to make these memories.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, on that note, I have a question and maybe a suggestion. $320, of course, times have changed. You know, we grew up, I didn't go to proms and stuff, and I paid for my own grad night. I think I was making $3.35 an hour. Thing is, can we, and this for the city manager, can we do where their foundation does, like, community service, say, i.e. pick up trash on the weekend, paint the walls in Grand Terrace, earn so much money per job, and bring in students who can work, because I know part of the college thing is what community service have you done? And those kids are earning money for the less fortunate kids. All right? Can we do something like that, instead of the $320 or getting paid $16 an hour?
I think we can set something up where the, there's a group of people will work to earn that for the foundation or for your group, and then the group can distribute that money as they feel appropriate.
There is something through the high school, if I'm not mistaken. What is the, through Edley, where they have to do so many community hours and...
But I haven't heard since COVID, honestly, I haven't heard that the community hours are structured.
Okay.
But we would certainly be glad to work with the school on the community hours. It would be a great credit. It's, and it would be kind of a three-way win, that the students can get their community hours, we can get some positive activity, and then your group can then raise funds for your activities with us.
I would be absolutely more than willing to help in that, and to be at the school and post flyers and encourage students and teachers and everything to be involved, but I would ask that that would, I wouldn't want to have to find volunteers in order to bless these students that so need it, because it shouldn't be contingent on that.
Well, it's not going to be contingent. It's going to be on community volunteers for the students, helping their fellow students out. Now, I know when my sons did the football team, we would take those football players to the senior centers and to the homeless shelters to do stuff, and that's with the coaches. So, and I know, like, the cheerleaders and everybody else in the band, they do their volunteers, and we get money. I'm thinking of a way so these, your able-bodied students and you guys can organize it with city staff help to earn money to go towards this, because I know you do fundraisers and stuff, and you sell baskets, but this will be an easier way where everybody gets a chance, and they also get volunteer hours. I mean, one day you're going to have 10 people, next day you might have three people, you know, the next weekend. But it's something out there where they could feel good about earning money for their fellow students, and it's not their money, it's your group's money, and that way, everybody, because they're going to be our future, that's going to be standing up here doing stuff for the less fortunate. So we work them now, you know, we get them into that, not work them working, but we get them into that mindset, and there's a lot of students, just like the students that are do the stop smoke program. Those kids are walking and doing stuff and picking up trash for nothing to put a word to stop smoking. So there are student activities out there, the student body, so this is a great thing to do, and plus, they're getting paid to help other students. So that's why I'm just asking, if we could do that instead of the $16 an hour, $320, if we could incorporate that.
I actually think that's a great idea, now that I'm kind of structuring this in my head here. If we created something like a philanthropy group for Senior Legacy, and we have seniors, or any grade level for that matter, that would like to join the part of Senior Legacy that volunteers, a volunteer Senior Legacy volunteer group, and we bring those kids out to provide efforts in the city, painting, pulling weeds, cleaning up, any, maybe somebody needs a yard sale setup or something, for that matter.
Well, it'll be strictly for the city, and I think, city manager, the city will provide the trash bags and the paint and stuff.
There's plenty of trash to pick up.
I agree.
I pick it up every once in a while, yeah, there's plenty.
I heard there's some on Barton.
I am, I'm an advocate for this city, and I'm an advocate for the youth, and... I am, I'm an advocate for this city, and I'm an advocate for the youth, and you know that my heart is, I help out in any way I can. So if that means that I organize a philanthropy group of volunteers to make this happen, then that is what I would do. But my heart is to give back to these kids.
Well, this will make them feel good, and this will make them, you know, it'll bring a sense of pride in helping others out, so. If the council thinks, agrees on something like that, Mayor, I mean, Councilman Robles.
Yeah, I do, I mean, my mother was a widow, and I remember, you know, you gotta have your ring and your book, and I says, I don't even want those things, they meant nothing to me, but she bought them anyways, and I know it was a big sacrifice for her. And I was fortunate enough that I was a fairly decent woman, so, you know, I had prom date that would pay for everything. But, you know, I used to always, we had a gentleman that was our science teacher, and we would go clean up on sides of freeways, like, we were ordered, what do you call it, trustees? So, you know, I mean, like, my mom, so, you know, really, I mean, the kind of effort that I put in as a young kid into the community, I mean, I could see where then I would feel good about if somebody covered something for me that was valuable for me in the high school thing. Or if I wasn't in that situation, I was the kind of person that would be happy to work for someone and donate those hours, you know, and money to a fund for someone else. So I think it's a great idea.
I would like to also add that we do scholarships, and on my application, the $2,000 was actually for scholarships, and the $4,000 was for senior needs. Scholarships, which I have adjusted, because as it was brought to my attention, that the maximum was 6,000, and so as I'm looking at it, I realized I also did the application wrong. Unfortunately, I was doing it at, I think, 1 o'clock in the morning.
Well, you know, I think what people need to realize is that, I think what I'm getting at is if there's gonna be community groups out there, and they're gonna be for charitable purposes, because I'm accustomed that when the community would come and do this kind of thing, they didn't come to the city and ask for money. You know, it was a completely community effort. So somehow we got into the business of when the foundation, or something underneath the foundation, has an idea, then they want us to fund it. Whereas they were created to have a board of directors and endowments, and earn interest on this endowment, and provide a help to the city in providing services.
I beg to differ. I, yes, I come to the community for assistance as a city, because that's what the Community Benefits Fund, to my knowledge, is what it's for, but I get a lot of sponsors and funding from our community members. In 2021, the very first year, 2022, I had a business here donate $5,000. For the past two years, I've had a business here sponsor $2,000 per year, and those go directly to scholarships of their choice, they get to name that scholarship. We have a great deal of funding, and $2,000 is, that I'm asking here from the Community Benefits Fund, is, it adds to the benefit for certain, but my first and foremost goal is to the community.
Right. And I, you know, I think that's, you know, I'm hearing for the first time the amounts, and that's incredible, because this is a small community, that's a lot of money. So, but, you know, when, when, what I'm talking about was, if you have something that's a $6,000 ticket item, that's huge, because what the community found, thing was, really started a number of years ago, and we really had no money to provide any youth services anymore. So what we were doing was just providing a little hand, you know, when there was something special, or if there was a cost that exceeded, you know, some of the teen members, and then by us giving a little, you know, they could help those kids. But we were not in the business of fully funding any initiatives. We didn't, we don't have those resources.
Right. In addition to what I was saying about the scholarships, is the high school no longer gives scholarships. The Apple Scholarship was something that was given by CJUSD, which last year was their final year. So what the scholarships that we did last year at the high school, which now the high school has allowed us to come to the award ceremony, that was never allowed before, they appreciate us, for sure. And so Senior Legacy goes to the award ceremony, and we offer our scholarships, and last year we found out that the one provided by CJUSD is no longer. So we, Senior Legacy, are one of three groups that provide scholarships to these kids in a situation where you go into extreme debt when you go into a university. One of our scholarships, in fact, is to go to a trade school. And I feel, yes, there's something about giving prom tickets and creating those memories for students that are well-deserving, but it's also very important to continue with these scholarships in a situation where we want to further our future leaders of America, we want them to go to college and universities and be well-rounded citizens. We need to help them with that. And unfortunately, universities are too expensive, and so if that means that some small groups, such as Senior Legacy, can provide a 500 or $1,000 scholarship, then I think that means a whole lot. And I appreciate any effort that you guys can provide to continue that.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilwoman Allen.
So my question to you, Mayor, is, and I guess to the city manager, but to the rest of the council, would be if we're, so Senior Legacy is not the only organization that has asked us and received money from us, and even recently, I mean, we paid several hundred or close to, it was over 1,000, I think, for that basketball tournament that the high school team had to raise money for.
Referees.
Yeah, we paid for the referees and that sort of thing, and that's not the first time we've done that. So my question to you is this, are we gonna, is this, I like your plan, your idea, I really think it's, I like it, I like what Tom and I were trying to do, the city manager was trying to do earlier, with trying to get some involvement with students with this internship, because it also adds something they can put on a resume for their very first resume they ever fill out. Are we gonna be consistent across the board? Are we gonna say to, for example, if the basketball team comes and says, we wanna do this tournament again and raise money for Lomelinda McDonald House, give us, can you have, give us money? Are we gonna say, you wanna come and pick up some garbage and paint some walls?
Yeah, I mean, we have to have it open for everybody, we only have so much money in the fund.
I know, but I mean, are we gonna...
And once it's done, it's done.
Yeah. Are we gonna say to every, all the future applicants, okay, we have a program where you can come and, and work at the city?
Yeah, you know, we could do that, it's, the city manager's gonna, right, I just made a suggestion, he wants to do it.
So I think we got a little bit of confusion with Ms. Bol, changing her application. So we really are looking at is two separate pieces. One, a request for senior post-graduation activities, and one, a request for a pure scholarship. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Before she had them put together. And I think the graduation activity is one thing to look at, as Mayor Housey looked at for the work piece, and then the scholarship is a different path to look at as a different entity. So we really should be discussing two separate applications, the way it sits now with her change. Does that make sense?
That's exactly right.
Yeah, but, but, I wasn't referring to that, what I was referring to is in the future, any future applicants, even, not even related to this legacy thing, but some other entity, are we gonna refer them for community service to earn what they're asking, rather than, or are we, it's gonna be case by case?
I think, case by case, but I do like the idea, if it's a student group or a group of young adults or able-bodied people that are looking for money, and they don't have a way to raise it, and they bake sale themselves out, that, yeah, we can, there's always trash to pick up, there's always weeds. So it is a path we could do, but on a case by case is certainly something we could look at.
And one of the things that I've learned recently is the value placed on, I mean, the students that I've, at the high school and the, anyway, is that internships are more valuable than a scholarship a lot of times, you know? Because an internship is a pathway to, can be a pathway to an immediate job. Yeah, and so, you know, that's one of the things I, like, I always thought that the ultimate thing to get is high school would be a scholarship, but maybe you don't wanna go to college, so an internship, so that's pretty good.
You see, the college bill, gotta be a good scholarship.
Yeah.
Regardless of the outcome, I intend to keep the internship program. I think it's important that the youth have an ability to gain work skills, simple things, be here at 8 o'clock in the morning, clock in, you know, have an old guy tell you that you're wrong. Those kind of things that are important to learn at 16 or 17, carry on through life. So we will continue that.
I could not concur more, I think it's very, yeah, absolutely.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think the issue that the council is confronted with is whether or not to approve the application for $2,000 for the Community Benefits Fund, in keeping with prior actions the council has taken. We can continue to have a discussion about program design here in the council chambers on the floor. We might be better served if we task the city manager with that responsibility and maybe report back. Ms. Bolz, I think, submitted an application for $6,000, which is always gonna get attention from the council and the community, because $2,000 is the maximum, and a $20,000 fund. She's recognized that and has, in effect, retracted the original application and submitted the community benefit application for $2,000. And because we're in a situation where it's, the proper course of action may not be abundantly clear, it might be best for the council to consider approving the $2,000 Community Benefit Fund, and rather than trying to script a solution here on the floor in tonight's meeting, and move forward for future community benefit applications, and for the fellowship program that the city manager has already devised, and is considering changes to that program pursuant to the council discussion tonight.
So that's your motion?
That would be my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'm not sure I'm clear on it. Can you paraphrase it into less words?
I apologize for being, yeah, I apologize for that. My motion is to, is to approve the $2,000 Community Benefit Application submitted by the foundation, and to incorporate or to consider future changes to the Community Benefit Program pursuant to the discussion that we've had tonight regarding the fellowship program and what the city manager has articulated as to potential changes to that program going forward.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Henderson, and a second by Mayor Protemp. City Attorney, you have anything to add?
Can we just clarify what the 2,000 will be used for?
I'm sorry?
Clarify what the $2,000 may be used for, what program, if you could, for the motion. For the scholarship?
I would have to defer to Ms. Clayton on that, but I thought it was for a scholarship program for eligible applicants.
Very good. I just wanted to make it clear for the record.
There are gonna be a City of Grand Terrace scholarship in the amount of $2,000 that they're gonna administer.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, council. Oh, yeah, item nine establishes transaction use tax presented by city attorney.
I just wanna say thank you very much, and with your scholarship donation, you get to choose how you, what the requirements are for that scholarship, so we'll talk.
Sit in a city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, and Happy New Year to everybody. So tonight I am going to be discussing a potential transactions and use tax for the City of Grand Terrace. This item supports goal number one, which is to ensure our fiscal viability by identifying additional revenue sources for the city. As brief background, an ad hoc citizens committee had recommended to the city council in December of 2023, that the city council consider adopting a 1% transactional use tax. The city council directed staff to provide some follow-up to that recommendation as to options and corresponding procedures for the establishment of that tax. Currently, we have a citywide tax of 7.75%, and as you see on the screen, the city gets 1% of that 7.75%. The other portions are distributed to the state or to the county. There remains a maximum of 10.25 as a cap, and the remaining available is 2.5%. The maximum that the state can add, add to as a transactional use tax is 2%. So for background, there's two different types of taxes that we're talking about. The general one that everybody knows about is the Bradley Burn Sales Tax, and under that one, the tax is allocated to the jurisdiction where the sale is made. The transactional use tax, however, is allocated to jurisdiction where goods are delivered or placed into use and service. So for example, if you buy a car, the tax on the car is based on where you live, because that's generally where you're gonna be placing the automobile into use. So that's a distinguishment between the two items. Now, if the council were to pursue a transactional use tax for a general purpose, meaning you can use it for any general governmental use, it would be known as a general tax. A city may levy, increase, or extend a transactional use tax for general purposes at a rate of 0.125% or a multiple thereof, if there is an ordinance that is approved by 2/3 of a vote of all members of that governing body, the city council, and then the tax is approved by a majority vote of qualified voters of the city. And again, for a general tax, it may be used for any governmental purposes. I know the ad hoc committee specifically identified law enforcement, and it certainly may be used for that purpose, but it may be used for anything else as well, such as roads, such as city facilities, things of that sort. For a general tax in a general election, the measure would be consolidated with our general municipal election. In this case, it will be November 5th of 2024. If we were to do a special election, I just put this in more for information, we would first have to declare a fiscal emergency by a vote of the city council. It would be a fiscal emergency, and the city council would need to adopt facts and findings and a resolution supporting the declaration of an emergency. In this case, there's no special election available for us in 2024. However, if the council wanted to do it as a special election, we could look at something in the years to come. As opposed to a general tax, the city council could consider a special tax. And if it is a special tax, it is dedicated for a specific purpose that is identified in the ballot measure. So for example, if we wanted to dedicate all of the funds generated by the tax to law enforcement, for example, or law enforcement-related uses, you could do it as a special tax. Remember, it would be limited to that purpose only. Again, it would be similar to the general tax in terms of, it's adopted at a rate of 0.125% or a multiple thereof. Again, we would need to do it, and adopt an ordinance, and the key, again, would be we would have to identify a fiscal strikeout. We would have to approve by 2/3's vote of qualified voters of the city. That is a key point, because for a general election, it's, you know, majority plus one, 30% plus one, I should say. For a special tax, approve by 2/3's vote. Again, a special tax in a general election, we could certainly do it at the next election. We would just have to clarify for the record if that's the direction of the council, that we would want a... we would want a special tax. We'd have to identify the type of tax, the rate, the method of collection, and the date on which the election on measure will be held and purpose for which the tax will be used, and that'll be the key key distinguishing factor between the general and the special Again, you do a special tax, but there's no special election this year. We could do it in future years if you'd like. In any case, whether it's a special or general tax, the council would need to do three things. We'd have to adopt three resolutions, which are ordering submission to to the voters the measure at the November 5th election. We would have to set priorities for filing written arguments and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis regarding the potential measure, and we would adopt a resolution providing the filing of rebuttal arguments for the tax submitted at the general election. Lastly, we would actually adopt an ordinance. If both of all three resolutions are adopted, we would do a first reading of the ordinance prior to August 9th of 2024 this year. The second reading would occur, assuming the ballot measure were to pass, it would occur after the the election is certified by the city council. So if the council was interested in pursuing this measure, we would need to adopt all these resolutions and the ordinances, preferably no later than June of 2024, so that the city clerk has time to breathe and not force it at the last minute. But if we absolutely had to, we probably could go to the first meeting in July. But again, ideally, second meeting in June would be perfect. Now, if the city council elects not to move forward with doing a ballot measure, the residents can always pursue a tax measure by an initiative process. I go through the in the staff report, all the steps that are laid out in the elections code for the initiative. I'm not going to go through that in this presentation, but I will say at the end of that presentation, the city council would have three options if, again, the initiative were to meet all the required elements to proceed. The city council would have three options, whether to adopt the ordinance under the code, which I'll get back to in a second. Second is submit the ordinance to the voters at the next regular election, or three is order a report from staff to come back and give an analysis on the proposed measure. We would recommend that even though those three options are outlining in the code, technically option one probably would not work in this case because under the Constitution, any tax measures must be approved by the voters. So we would recommend it would either be item two, submit the voter, the ordinance to the voters, or order a report, which would then lead you to the question to submit the ordinance to the voters anyway. In terms of moving forward with this process, the cost would be limited to really getting the city attorney's fees to prepare the necessary resolutions and ordinances and also the cost for public outreach and education on the measure as a reminder, and then staff can speak to what potential plans that would include. But as a reminder, for the city council, the council would have the ability to educate the community, but not advocate for the measure. So that that's a key distinguishing factor when when a ballot measure is on the ballot, and I'm happy to prepare a memo to the council with some do's and don'ts if the council were to proceed down this road. So with that, tonight, what staff is looking for from the city council is whether the council would like staff to proceed with preparing the necessary resolutions to place the measure on the ballot, which would mean adopting, preparing the three resolutions and a draft of the ordinance. We would bring that back to you sometime in the spring or early summer, and if if the council did wish to proceed, we'd like to know confirm whether it be a general tax or special tax and what percentage rate the council would like to proceed at. And again, this would be just to get us going. The council could always modify as need be when the resolutions are brought back. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council has questions. Councilman Allen?
Of the currently, the 7.75% rate that we have, that 1% that the city gathers from that, is that a sales tax or a transaction tax?
That is a sales tax.
And that would that stay a sales tax?
Yes, that would that would not be affected.
Okay, and so my second question is, so then, to be clear, we would have a 1% sales tax and a 1% if if this went on the ballot, for example, and then it passed, then there would be a 1% transaction tax.
That is correct.
So also, my question is, my next question is, would a transaction tax result in any loss of tax revenue to the city because, for example, if if the tax go is if the tax goes to where the product will be used? We can use a car, for example. You go to the car dealer, you know, and the tax goes to the city where the car is going to get registered and be used, so it'd go to granted. So but it's not just cars, is it, where that the high dollar items, that that sales tax goes to the place where the item is used? What about items that are used for construction purposes? So if we had a construction supply house in the city, for example, and all the products that they sold were used outside of the city, would we lose that tax if we had a transaction tax rather than a sales tax?
I I don't see that.
Like, if you paid $10,000 for a big HVAC unit down here at the plumbing supply store right here by the freeway, and then went over here to Riverside and installed it in a new house, who's going to get the tax for that big $10,000 HVAC unit?
So those those are considered sales tax, not transaction.
And if we had a transaction tax, would we would we get that also, or would that go?
We'd continue to get the sales tax for that.
And the transaction tax?
Yes.
Even though it won't be used in our city?
Because it doesn't fall under the that item doesn't fall under a transaction tax.
Okay.
So when we did this study, we had our sales tax consultant.
Yeah.
Review both pieces of that, and they came up with the increment for the sales tax and the increment for the transaction tax.
Okay.
And then the final amount we have for both of that, that 1.7 million, is the true increment for both of those together.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Henderson?
My question is with respect to the the general tax, and while it can be used for any legal general fund purpose, could not the council by policy conform to the recommendation made by the committee? For instance, could not the that committee or a similar committee serve as a blue ribbon audit committee for the funds that would be collected for law enforcement services? And could not that committee render a report to the city council annually as to the funds received in the general fund that the council by policy and by action has set aside in a different fund for the additional law enforcement services? So even though, excuse me, I'm sorry, even though it's a general purpose tax, my understanding is the council could establish limitations on the receipt, use, and auditing of those funds going forward?
The answer is yes. I mean, that you could do that every year through the budget process and and allocate certain monies to however the council sees fit. That could be changed year to year as as times change. The key difference is with the general tax, you the council will have the flexibility.
Sure.
To make that determination on a case by case basis. If it's a special tax, you can you don't have that flexibility, and the only way to change it would be to go back to the voters.
Understood. The the special tax is, the approval process is 50 plus one, correct?
That's correct.
As opposed to 66 and two thirds.
That's correct.
For the special tax. So if the council wanted to assure the community that the funds collected would be used for the purposes articulated in the various arguments for and against, it could do that. Although, are you indicating that that those types of provisions would be annually renewed? Or could the council, for instance, establish a longer period of time than?
Sure, the council could.
At the typical budget process?
Yeah, the council could make a determination on how, you know, like, we think for the next few years, you know, this is a percentage of funds that need to be allocated to this use. You certainly can do that. But but again, for the for purposes of the ballot measure, the ballot measure will be written in a way where it's.
Sure.
Any, I think the term is any governmental purpose, any general governmental purpose.
So staff.
Thank you.
Staff would anticipate that there would be some council oversight and restriction and probably in an ideal world direction from council to have either citizen or an independent body provide some oversight as well, understanding, you know, that the community is putting this money up for a specific purpose, and we need to honor that going forward.
Councilor Robles?
So this is my 11th year. When I came on on board, that's when we lost the revenue from the redevelopment agency. And the city manager at that time had advised the council that without a utility tax, we were going to go under. So I sat here and it was it was incredible. We could hear people from the Facebook world that assembled, and they came in, and we were going to violate fire code and had to send them not to sit on stairs and all that. And everybody was, they wanted, you know, the utility tax so we could keep services, the parks open and all that stuff. Well, my sense is that this community is so closely divided that the reason it failed was because some ambitious people went door to door and told them the city didn't need it. You know, we we had plenty of money. So what I recall is we spent maybe, I want to say 79,000 or 179,000 on voter education, and then the worst thing audience, it failed. And then the next day, the city manager contacted all of us and said that they found the money to backfill it from residual redevelopment agency money. So we've gone through this, you know, and because there's such amount of people that on either side, you know, are are for it, you know, I'm concerned about the money. So I'd like to see in a, I think we have some time to do some some more analysis. I'd like to see the money that we spent on voter education. And the other thing is, when the parcel tax was withdrawn, I told the the community folks, you need, it's in your in your ballpark now. You need to go door to door and get get the signatures. And now reading this, it took me some time, you know, after I asked you the questions to get it, they seem, if the voters do it, they have a lot more favorable conditions, I believe, than we do. Adrian, don't they have more flexibility, you know, and?
In terms of?
Of getting signatures and the language and and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I they do have some more flexibility than I would say we do, but again, it still would have to be placed on the ballot. There would still be arguments and and things of that sort. So I don't know if it'd be that significant of a difference.
Mm-hmm.
The way I see it. They just have to go through a lot more steps.
Well, the the reason is about they have to go through a lot more steps, but in the interim, you're getting a sense of what the community interests. Because when there was a recall of the governor, I sent money so they could afford to get the the word out, and I became a circular and would download those things and take them to get people signed up. So my feeling is, if there's something you really believe in, because there was saying it was hard to get the signatures, well, if there's a real big interest in the community on something, they'll call you up, they'll hunt you down, you know, to to get that signed. So but so I'm just, so I don't feel there's enough analysis information here for me. I need to know how much it would cost the city. And in that report, you know, we we have only excess revenues maybe of 300,000 going into the to the following year. We've never, you know, we we haven't responded to what we're going to do for for any future programs from the city like you. We haven't touched that. So I I'd like to see what the costs are going to be. And then in the polling for the sales tax with this transportation agency, Grand Terrace was was part of a focus group, and I didn't see it, and I, you know, but and but that was the most difficult group in that focus group, to get them from the the point of they they say, we pay taxes and we shouldn't pay anymore. So that was, you know, so that's less of a problem when you're dealing with a countywide sales tax, but for just a small part of Grand Terrace, we really need to know what that polling is, what that number is, and is there a kill switch? If it's, you know, the numbers are really bad and we don't and we don't think from the pollsters that we can bridge that gap of education, I think we need to have that in the analysis, too. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, you have a question?
I I agree with Councilwoman Robles's comments. I think it's important that we somehow develop a consensus, and if that is a a citizen initiative, so be it. We have not ever been able to answer the question, does more money actually mean more more security or more protection? But I certainly think we need to understand the dynamics of what's happening within the community, and it's easy to say, you know, there's more crime. Well, there's more crime everywhere. I mean, it really comes down to it. So it's a, you know, it's more of a regional problem than it's anything else. But we have a unique situation. Not I'm not opposed to, you know, carrying it with some kind of a tax initiative in order to be able to provide greater security to our sheriffs. You know, the it's it's tough to go out there all by your lonesome and then hope that by the time everybody gets there, you got a good parachute before somebody cut your throat. That's that's very important. I would like to know what the cost to the city is to ballot, and we're talking about city time, consultant time, attorney time, and let's just go ahead and list the attorney, the et cetera, et cetera, et ceteras, because it's never cheaper. And if it's 150 grand, I agree with Councilwoman Robles that it would be good to have some kind of a safety switch, that we could, you know, in business, you do it all the time. You know, you get part of the engineering done, find out the project isn't feasible, and so you shut it off and say, wait a minute, why are we spending more money on this one? We know we're not going to be able to make any money on it. So in this instance, I think we need to have something that says whether it's going to be a pass or fail. And I was there during that little deal with the utility tax. I had a very vested interest in it, and I remember the city manager at the time, who wasn't this city manager, gasping audibly when the consultant said 2%, and she said, I think, I was thinking more like seven. And we started doing the math, and the math got crazy. Now, I do know that we can include a monument of some kind or maybe, and even, you know, a evergreen, if that's what we want to do. But I think the citizens initiative idea is probably not such a bad idea because you gain support as you start wearing tread off your shoes. And then last but not least, will we be able to reimburse ourselves legally if this thing does pass and we start taxing ourselves and we can reimburse ourselves for the cost out of pocket for attorney, consultant, city, and et cetera, et cetera? It would seem to me that we would want to build something like that into the ordinance to make sure that the city doesn't endure an unusual cost they can't get reimbursed for. So anyway, I think I think we don't have to. So anyway, I think, I think we don't have to be in a hurry because we already know we're looking at August 9th for a filing date, but I think we need to answer some questions.
Okay, before I get in public comment, wait, let me ask a question next, then I'll get to you. All right. Before I get in public comment, my question is, you had the transition tax and what got me is the, the saying that you said can be used for anything in the city. This, what I understand that the, when the committee got together, this is specifically for law enforcement enhancement. Now me as a voter, when I read it can be used for anything in the city, I'm less likely going to do it. The wording, just like on that transient tax that we're going to bring every homeless person in the world come and live in the hotel because they saw transient, bad word. It should have been a hotel, you know, and tax for, you know, residents there or whatever. So when you have used for anything in the city, I think that's bad verbiage on it. It should be specific, if we do move forward and we look at everything, it should be specific on what this is going to be used for. I know Councilmember Henderson said, you know, to have residents, look, you know, establish an oversight committee with the residents to make sure that this, because we're not going to be on the council forever. And if we are, if I'm voting on this, I want to make sure 10 years from now that this money is still going for law enforcement, not for something else. So why do we have to have that verbiage in there? Can you, can we put the verbiage in there if it goes through on the citizens initiative that this is a sales tax used only for law enforcement enhancement?
Yes, the, the city council can choose whatever direction they want to go. If you do make that statement that it's only for purposes of law enforcement, then it would be considered a special tax because you're limiting it to that one purpose.
Okay. And then it could also be a statement that an oversight, citizens oversight committee will be doing an annual audit to make sure all those funds are directly for, just like the bond measure for the Colton Joint Unified.
I have not seen that one, but I presume you could so long as you can meet the 500-word limitation on the ballot measure.
I just want to get clarification because it was crazy that the transient tax that we're going to get homeless people because people can't, you know, read through it and like Council Robles, education is a big thing.
And, and that's why I was pushing the citizens thing because there's a big gap in this community of, of understanding how we operate.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Henderson?
I appreciate the comments that have been made by, by colleagues. They're all well thought out and issues that we should consider going forward. But I'd like to remind my colleagues that we established by motion a citizens committee to evaluate this process. And we received a report from the committee. And I think it's important to note that the recommendation made by the committee was unanimous. So we had 11 citizens of Grand Terrace who diligently worked on this particular topic, intelligent, smart, hardworking volunteers, who did a really good job on behalf of the city. And so we can talk about process and I think that's important. But my focus is in some form or fashion, getting this item before the citizens of the community where a vote can be taken, yea or nay, up or down, as to whether or not we're willing to tax ourselves for enhanced law enforcement services. So I say that only because I'm, just because I would vote to place something on the ballot doesn't mean that Ken Henderson, private citizen, is going to vote in support of it. So I'd like to be able to distinguish between the vote placing it on the ballot without people making the assumption that I support it or my colleagues support it. What I support is the most fundamental form of democracy, which is to have our citizens vote on this topic. I was here, I served as a committee member. Mr. Hussey, Mayor Hussey served, that's where we first met in 2013. Having said that, I would not, I would not reference that process as the way to go in this process because it was mismanaged in my view from, from the start. And Councilmember Robles and, and Councilmember Wilson have articulated some of the things that, that happened. So it was a difficult process. There were council members who publicly supported the measure but privately didn't support the measure. So we didn't, as a governing body, have our act together in many different ways. So if we can move past that, reference it, be educated by it, but, but go forward, looking forward as to what's the best way to get this before the citizens where we get a vote up or down as to, as to whether or not we'll tax ourselves for enhanced law enforcement services. Maybe the answer is the council places it on the ballot, maybe the answer is the initiative ballot that's been described by Mr. Wilson and, and Councilmember Robles. I don't have an answer for that. My focus right now as one of five is to, is to take whatever action that is necessary and appropriate to get this matter before the voters. Thank you.
Well, you know, we have till June to, to work on this. And so we're basically saying we just need some more information and somebody could just send me why it costs 1.7 million to have one full-time equivalent of a sheriff. But, but even the, what, you know, we still need to know the, what we expect to get. I know, I can't remember all these numbers, I need them in front of me. And so, but, you know, we'll have this discussion, you know, with, with, with the community as we move through agendizing these analysis. Because I hate to see any, anything above, you know, even 100,000 going to something that we have no clear chance of, of, of winning. And I think too, if we need a very vibrant experience where maybe the citizens are talking to people door to door, it's going to be election time, you have forums, you have education and you really, you know, get things going and getting people more attuned to, to what it is. I think we could put it on there, but they're going to see that we have a history of putting and asking for, you know, utility tax was asked before. We, we, well, I was on the council at the time. So, and then, you know, transient occupancy, but I'm sorry, but, you know, people out there think that was for transients, then that is a big warning, red flag to us, how far we need to educate folks on things. And that barely went through. So we have some time to do some, you know, work on this and some discussion and, and make a decision.
Councilwoman Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. So I just want to ask you, Councilmember Robles, I know we have time and I think that's great, but if, if the voter, I think the voter initiative, if, if rather than putting in the item on the ballot through the council, but if, you know, as Mayor Portman was discussing, they're only allowed a certain number of months, I think, to collect signatures. And if it needs to be done by June, and I think they're only allowed six months or five or six months to do that whole process. And that was one of the issues that the last time is, is that they just didn't, they ran out of time to collect signatures. And so I think that consideration needs to be given that if we were to say, no, we don't want to pony up the money to put this on the ballot and we're going to turn it back over and let them pound the pavement and try to get signatures, well, they need time to do that. And that would, would mean that we would need to act really, really soon, like this month or like February, early February, please. However, if we, if we go ahead and assume the responsibility ourselves of, of, of giving our residents, all our residences, the choice of choosing themselves whether they want to, and that's the beauty of, and I'm not trying to be a proponent of anything, but that's the beauty of this type of a tax is you get to choose whether you want to pay it or not, even if it passes. Because if you don't want to pay it, you just don't make the purchase. So as parcel tax and a utility tax, you don't get a choice and it's no wonder the residents turned it down. So, but this one, this one is, I believe, I believe that we owe it to our residences, just like Councilmember Henderson said, all those people that gave, the, the committee members that came forward and gave their time, yeah, I respect everything they did and appreciate what they did. And I think that we should honor their wish in that respect because they were representing the community. And that's what we are asking for, is what the community wants us to do. And, and so I would support that effort on just, my, my support of getting it on the ballot doesn't mean I support the tax effort, I just support the opportunity for people to choose on their own. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, before we go, can I?
I, I was just going to say, we, you know, we, we can make a, a, a decision, I'm sure, by the next meeting.
Okay, no other questions, or public comment?
Bobby Forbes? I was on the committee and we worked hard and we were really blessed to have some very special people on that committee that know how things work with the government. And I'm not one of those people, but I'm one of the people that care about the community. And for seven years, I've been trying to get another deputy in this town. And Johan Gallo, the sheriff's department, other people have tried harder than me, but I'm kind of the one that kickstarted it. And it's exhausting and this community wants more sheriff patrol. So I thank you for reviewing this and dissecting it and trying to figure it out and make it right. And if the citizens aren't willing to pay 1% more tax to get another deputy, they just don't get it and they're not going to get it because 1% is nothing. They pay it every, when they go to Redlands to shop at whatever those stores are that they shop at, I don't shop at, they're paying it already over there. So they're reaping the benefit of that 1%. We need it. And somehow, I'm a person that is on the street, so once it gets to where it needs to be publicized, I'm going to be out there pushing it as hard as I can to the people I, the same people that I tried to get seven years ago to agree to have an increase. That might not have been the right way to go, but at least it got people talking. And we need this. It's obvious we need it in our town, in ours. If we have two code enforcement officers seven days a week, why can't we have two cops? Thank you. Michelle Sabino?
Thank you, Council, for being very clear that you likely do not support the initiative. We've had several members from the community state that they are concerned with their safety in this community. I know that there's concern with wanting to see more numbers. Please refer back to the last meeting, slide number eight, which tells you that 443 hours were spent on mutual aid that had to come in that wasn't serviced to this region. Additionally, please refer to slide 11 that says our current service levels under contract right now is 2.6 million. Right now, we're spending money for overtime to bring in additional services from somewhere else because we don't have the staffing to secure here. Additionally, on page 12 of that same slide, you'll find where that 1.7 million comes in. Thank you for asking whether or not it could be earmarked specifically for safety in this region. I don't know if anyone has read presently SB 43, which now modernized conservatorship and better help for people in need, especially those that we continue to have this revolving issue at council regarding J.C. Wallace House, healthcare, people with mental health issues. Last time I was here, we talked about the number of our officers who have been assaulted, our officer. We only have one officer on the street at any given time who has to rely on mutual aid from somewhere else. And so does our community. Also, last time during our meeting, we talked about a contract that has been in place since, I believe, 1978. We're in 2023. Grand Terrace has grown, the region around us has grown. Yes, other areas do have crime, but we have always prided ourself in being Grand Terrace. And so to make a statement that, well, we're just part of the region, I don't think that's acceptable. People come here for family, community, safety. And so if we could get the numbers that would show, what our committee asked was for a consultation with information regarding the dollar amounts of what that would cost. So I agree, we should see what that would cost as far as attorney fees and such, you know, and even potentially looking at having that money reimbursed. If it has to be a citizen committee, then so be it because you have four people here who spoke today, they will go out and tell people about their concerns and the issue and what happened tonight. Those people will go tell others and so it goes. But I thank you for your time, I thank you for your consideration and please don't let this, don't let this initiative die here tonight. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that I took the lead in making sure that we had overtime. And the reason we have overtime is because we don't have the budget capacity to make a commitment for a full-time deputy. And when I spoke about region and had to do with this transportation tax, not with the city of Grand Terrace.
Any other public comment?
No more public comment.
Okay, let me bring it back to council for deliberation, I'm sorry, it was my voice. Ken Henderson, Councilmember Henderson?
Mayor, I just wanted to publicly, once again, thank the committee and the work that they did in this matter. We have local pillars of society highly respected that, on that committee. And I believe, handled correctly, the committee could be the force to present the initiative process to the greater community. And we, we had, we have a number of different organizations represented by the members of that community. And so if we do take that particular approach, I would suggest to my colleagues that our first matter of discussion with the committee members should be the committee hopefully taking the lead or one of the lead positions in the initiative process. Thank you.
Mayor? Councilwoman Allen?
Hey, Councilmember Henderson, are you, so are you, it sounds to me like you're, you're referring to like a, a, a citizens initiative to get the ballot on the measure rather than the council initiative?
No, sir, I understand why you could draw that conclusion. I'm, I'm supportive of the council. If I had to, to vote or support one or the other, it would be for the council to place the matter on the ballot. But I, I believe that portions of the initiative process could be used and applied subsequent to the council placing on the ballot by using the committee as I described earlier.
Yeah. Because I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with you enough that I would be, but I'm, I'm almost at a point where I'm willing to make a motion, but I'm thinking about Councilmember Robles and, and, and her suggestion that we get a, by the next council meeting, we get a report back on what it would cost to do the education and the, and all that, how much it costs the city to get it on the ballot, you know, if we, if we do do it. And so, you know, but I'm, I mean, I support the council, a council move to put it, get it on the ballot, but I don't want to overs, I know she has concerns and I, I would like to know that too before I actually would, you know, vote it. I'd like to know the cost, you know what I mean, Councilmember Robles, what you were talking about earlier?
Yeah, and, and I need to see that before, you know, I, I know. Yeah. And, and I need to see that before, you know, I, I know which way I want to go.
But I, I mean, I, I really, I'm with you, Ken, on this, on the council. So I support, given our residents. And, and, and I just, I don't think we, that, I don't think a citizens initiative, I don't think pounding the pavement, knocking on doors, pop-ups in the CVS parking lot, I just don't see it. It's been tried so many, I mean, it's, I just don't, I, I wish it could be successful, but I, I mean, you know.
Well, has it been, I mean, I don't know of a time, other than after the partial tax, there was some kind of attempt. So we can't say there's been a bunch of attempts and, and, and they failed.
But I know, but it, the thing is, is we don't have the luxury of trying one, and then, well, that one didn't work, let's try the other, because that's, you know.
Right. But that's where I'm going to say, so depending on what the costs are, and if we can swallow the cost, and I've never heard of anything about a reimbursement, so that's something we have to, to find out, too. But it's easiest for, I mean, the way the community sees city councils nationwide, it's easy for us to spend money, their money. And it's easy for us to say we want to tax them. And it's easy for us to say we're going to, you know, put a safety net around that money. And then you see jurisdictions that have done that, they're all fighting because City of San Bernardino, they needed the money. And they were not legally held to, you know, to a special, special tax.
But I think one of the things that I think we were, you know, you could say blessed or lucky with is that our ad hoc committee, the leadership of our ad hoc committee, she was in a, in a position to know those costs. And I think that she probably led that committee in a manner, that they had educated them to know that.
You know, at the same time, the, the also, you know, the citizens could say, well, you got people in that committee that want the tax. There was nobody in that committee that didn't want the tax. So there was really no, you know, community discussion going on there. So, you know, because these are going to be, all the things are going to come at us when we, when we, when we're trying to get this passed.
I will say that there were people on the committee who were not prepared to support a tax. And were convinced by their analysis and the data presented to, to support a 1% tax. And I, I think that the unanimity of the committee, the, can't be, can't be overstated and overemphasized in this regard. I think the committee individuals can, can be a major player in this process. From an initiative process, it certainly has some benefit to it. I just think that with the time available to us, that it would be difficult, if not impossible, to, to meet those timelines from the initiative process. And the idea that the council could assist in some form or fashion by placing the matter on the ballot and, of course, incurring the, the costs associated with that process, so that the Grand Terrace citizens have an opportunity to, to, to vote yea or nay, is the approach that I think we should consider.
Councilmember Robles?
We don't even know how many votes they have to get. There's no analysis here, you know. So they have to get some, I don't know what percentage or whatever showed up at the last election. That's the rough thing I know. The other thing is, I had a gentleman send me a, an email. We had a nice discussion. And, you know, like I told him, there's nothing that we can do without being transparent and being in the public. I can talk to only one member legally, you know, on an agenda item before a meeting. And that's not a majority, so there's no things going in the back. So, but, you know, I kind of take exception that this, you know, where the, the strong, the unity of the committee, they're strong, they're blah, blah, blah. But yet, you know, we're still the council, and we still have to, you know, say, okay, what is going to be the fiscal burden of this? What are going to be, you know, are we just going to throw money because we feel good about something and we feel that it might pass? And then we're $200,000 out, and we have a $300,000 cushion. That's all we have. So, you know, those are the things that advisory committees pass on to us, and then it's incumbent on us to have a different kind of review. If, you know, and the other thing is that if they're that strong, and their leadership's that strong and that kind of unity, then they should be able to put the initiative on the ballot, too. That's, you know, is a letter of lens.
Okay, I, I have a question for the city manager. When we did a transient tax, did you bring it to the council first on how much everything's going to cost before we voted on it? What the, the total amount's going to be for the ballot and before we went to this step?
I don't recall. I didn't, I do know that the council appropriated, I'm trying to remember if it was $40,000 or $50,000 for polling and public education as part of that project. And I'd anticipate that this, this would, this is going to be more. I mean, just as, as a guess, but I, I don't recall if it was, if it was done as, if it came in before you approved it, and then we came back and says it was going to cost, or if it came together. I don't remember.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I understand, this is like the first step. And, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't here, but I did watch it. And all the staff who did put all those, I mean, all the public who put in all those hours. And, you know, I was really proud of the public and how they presented it, and, and, you know, the committee and, and all the work they did. And, and, you know, you do hear, like Ms. Forbes and, you know, Councilmember Robles was saying, and since I've been on the council, that's all we heard is more sheriffs, more sheriffs, more sheriffs. Now, everybody wants more of it, but they don't want to spend. Now, this is, like you said, this is a sales tax. I mean, all these other things came up. So the sales tax, we're pretty much staying with the other parts because you could go here to Colton and shop, and you're paying extra cell tax, or Loma Linda, I think Loma Linda still stayed low, but, you know, anywhere else, and you don't bat an eye. This is to tap in on people coming into Grand Terrace, High Grove, and everything else, plus some of the residents to help subsidize the sheriffs. So we're not asking, like Councilmember Allen said, hey, you don't want to do the tax, don't, don't buy anything. I mean, that's great, but you are going to buy something. I understand that, you know, the numbers need to be in front of us to see it. I respect the committee and what they want to do. I'm all for it. That's why I brought this up, to bring the committee, because every time you hear something, okay, what are the residents going to do about it? Because they always want the council to do that. And when the council comes up with a plan, they think that we're doing something behind their back, and we're going to use the money for something else. Yes, we had bad, bad history, and we learned from it, but this is doing it the right way. And, yeah, the residents need to go out and speak and educate. And as council members, you know, I can't get with, I could give it, Councilmember Henderson, but I can't talk to Mayor Pro Tem because they were brownnecks. So alls I could do is just go out there, and if they ask me a question, you know, we, we clarify it to them. So if, I know we have plenty of time, and that's not killing this initiative. And I know two of the council members want to see numbers in front of them. So do we bring this back with the numbers in front to see what the cost is going to be to, you know, so they could see it and do their, do it digitally, and they did their homework? And, because, yeah, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm ready to vote for it today because I know what the citizens want. And I drive around here at night, and I see what's going on, and I, I see who's running around at night, and law enforcement, federal law enforcement, my son's in law enforcement, so I see firsthand, firsthand. I don't sit there on Facebook all the time and listen to it. I go out there firsthand and see it. And yes, this state has crime everywhere. The voters voted for Proposition 47 that killed us. The voters vote for all this because what they didn't do, like Councilmember Robles said, they weren't educated. They were not educated. They did not read the fine print. They watched the commercial, and they were brainwashed. So now, we are paying for that. Our law enforcements are paying for this. You know, now I think it, you, for the poll somebody over probably caused the registration's got to be over two months now. And my son makes more drug busts and illegal guns because of the registration being. So now we just gave something else for the criminals. So I don't know how many more times these lawmakers are going to, I'm going to get out that soapbox. Anyway, yes, and I'll back this up 100%. I don't care about the next election. I'll put it on myself. I want it, you know. And I don't care if they say, well, that's why Bill Hussey got elected because he wants a race tax. No, Bill Hussey wants to maintain this peaceful living of the city, and I will pay the extra 1% to maintain that little piece of a Mayberry RFD on that. So can we bring this up back with some numbers to see how much it's going to cost, and then move forward with the recommendation?
The answer is yes.
Counselor, you agree with that?
Mr. Mayor, I think my, my positions have been made clear, but I want to make this clear as well. It was not to obviate the need for the analysis and the studies are required, not, excuse me, not required, but described by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson and Councilmember Robles. That's, that's a part of my, my thinking. But at the same time, I, the focus for me has been the, the, the need, that I think is pretty clear, and the, the activity and report rendered by the, by the committee. I think the council established the committee in good faith. And so in order to support its activities, we need additional information. And in much the same fashion has been described by Mr. Wilson and Councilmember Robles. Thank you.
Yes, exactly. We need different information. They did such hard work. We can't just make the same decision at one time. We need to move forward with it. So that way, this sales tax, if the voters want it, and we give them all the education, can be passed to protect our city and our law enforcement. So we just can't, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's. We also have to do our homework on it to make sure we're taking care of these residents. And I think that's what Councilmember Robles and Mayor Pro Tem's talking about. They just want to see additional money cost. And, you know, I'm all for you, Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Henderson, and I'm for this, but let's, let's do our homework, and let's take this one step at a time to make sure that we do everything that is correct. So that's my motion on that, to bring this back for future discussion with the proper amount of cost that's going to pertain to this. And, city attorney, is that good?
Yep.
So the initiative's not dead. We're going to bring it back. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
With that, the staff intends to bring this back next meeting or no later than the first meeting in February. This, for us, on the timing is of the highest priority because there's education involved. And we, I know we have till June and possibly even until August. But with the education, we want to make sure we get that message out early and reinforced over and over so that we have an educated populace, and we need the time to do that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, the next item, and thank you, council, for the discussion. I know you guys were all in this together for the best of the city. We're looking out for the best of the residents. Future agenda items. At this time, the city council may proceed with items discussed and our actions at the future duly agenda. City council meeting consensus, the majority of the quorum is required to place item on future agenda. I have some, but does anybody else have any? Councilmember Allen?
I do.
And Councilmember Henderson?
Any. It might be the same thing.
Okay, well, since my necks only turns this way because of my operation, but you know what? Councilmember Henderson, go ahead.
My suggested item relates to the potential opposition by the city of the high fixed charge on utility bills that's being proposed by investor-owned utilities here in the state of California. It's a arcane, technical discussion that we have to familiarize ourselves with. But if I understand what is being proposed correctly, we received correspondence from the executive director of the California Public Interest Research Group, CalPerg. And CalPerg identified reasons why cities and counties should oppose what the investor-owned utilities are proposing. And it was a bill passed at the assembly level with no notice, passed in three days. You had at least 22 assembly members and state senators who, who voted on the bill admitted that they didn't know that that particular provision was in the bill. So I'm suggesting that we place an item on the agenda. At the same time, there needs to be some analysis, either from CalPerg representatives, or staff, or some combination thereof, so that if we take a position on the proposal, and I'm suggesting that we oppose it, that we oppose it for the right reasons. So I'm asking for the council to consider placing this on a future agenda.
So I have a question for you, Ms. Henderson. So having it, so I'm, I'm aware of this, of what the, you're referring to, what the investor-owned utilities are proposing for the ballot. And, and as you mentioned also, I'm absolutely opposed to them like that. And I'm not sure that I even need a staff report to change my mind. Now, if you want to have one and to learn more about it, that's fine with me, too. I'm all about getting educated. But, yeah, I mean, I don't need a staff report to, to sign your letter of opposition for that, for that, what they're wanting to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. And I couldn't agree with you more. I just wanted to ensure that if, in fact, one of my colleagues wanted more information, if the letter from the executive director of CalPerg was insufficient, that we, we might attempt to resolve that insufficiency in a, in a future action. But I think we should oppose it for the reasons that are made clear in the correspondence and my correspondence to the manager, which was copied to you. And the sooner the better, in my opinion. Thank you.
So we have a first and a second?
And I support you. Yeah, I second it.
For the future agenda. All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Councilmember Allen, you had something that you wanted to put on?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. You know, I believe that we need to have a discussion about our, our policy ordinance, or whatever it is, on how CUPs are issued by our city. And this is more specifically what I'm referring to. I believe that if a CUP required council actions for approval or for its original approval, then only the council can authorize changes to the CUP for, in the future. Not all our businesses in our city, CUPs required council action. But there's a few that did. And, and, and the point being that CUPs can have their conditions changed if the person deems that the changes are just not too substantial. And that's what happened with the CUP at this facility down here, that, that used to be Blue Mountain Villas, or this, or was, or, yeah. And now it's the Wallace House. And it, we were, we, the count, this, this, this facility's CUP was originally approved by the council. It's one of the few in the city that it was. And, and I believe that that action should have been brought back to the city council, at least so we would have been made aware, and we wouldn't have been left in the dark, in the lurch, trying to answer questions about something we didn't know anything about had happened.
You're saying that would be the trigger for it to come here?
If, if its original approval was, was brought, had to, was made by council. Like, for example, I can give you another example. There's a trailer storage yard right down here in the corner of our city. That required city council action for approval. And I would not want a staff, a person, as much as I trust our staff here, I would not want the staff alone to have the authority to change any conditions on that CUP. Because it was so important of a CUP, the council had to get involved for it to get, for it to, for it to get its permit. So I think those, those, at least we should be made aware of, that these, this facility or this business is, this CUP is having these changes made, and it was originally approved by council, and that's why we're advising council of it now. Not, not the little ones, like that Planning Commission deals with or all that stuff, but the, the ones that are, that can really come back to haunt us, like what's happening right now. And so I think I'd like to have a discussion about that. I'd like to know what businesses have those. And so I think I'd like to have a discussion about that. I'd like to know what businesses have those and, and make sure that we change the verbiage in our ordinance that shows that those CUPs will come back for council attention. However you want to word it.
So that's your motion?
I support the, the, the motion to have a discussion about it. I have a, and it's important that we have the discussion, but I have a difference of opinion with respect to changes to the CUP process. Most general law cities designate the city manager as the CEO in the administration of contracts, redevelopment contracts, permits to make administrative changes without it going back to the council. And that's for efficiency reasons. That's for a whole number of reasons that are considered positive on behalf of that particular city. I've worked with cities where what Mr. Allen is discussing was in place and then removed and then put back in place after the council realized that they were dealing with issues that every agenda item was, was on a CUP revocation process. And I can only tell you how contentious and controversial those discussions are. Typically, the CUP is approved by the planning commission and typically the council only gets in, in, involved when the matter is, is appealed to the city council. So I think we should have the discussion for the reasons that Mr. Allen articulated. Because, but I don't know that J.C. Wallace should be the determining factor on how we review and amend this process.
Okay, we have a motion for the discussion to look at CUPs in a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, well, I have a couple.
You forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I told you.
Usually you tap me for Ken. I didn't see the hand. Go ahead, Councilman Robles.
Mine will be real quick. I mean, I've sat in a few meetings where the Wallace issue has been discussed and we can't talk about it because it's not agendized. So I'd like to agendize a report, a receive and file, just to bring us up to date where that is and what you're going to do.
I'll second that. Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, part of my thing, I might be piggybacking. Does anybody else have anything? Part of my thing might be piggybacking, Councilman Robles, is a subcommittee for the Wallace House, Operation to Protect the Residents and Grant Terrace Quality of Life, to stop the rumors and make sure that they're doing what is, what they are promised at the Wallace House, agreed on, and what they were supposed to do. Now, will that be part of what you want to have on that or do you want to have a subcommittee where we, when they have their meeting with the sheriffs and the city manager, that you have two representatives here who were voted for by the residents that are protecting the residents? And that's like, because we're getting questioned out there all the time that we can also bring back to the council. Did you want to piggyback on with that or did you want to do a subcommittee?
That'd be great.
Anybody? All right, so motion for me and seconded by Councilman Robles, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, then I have a couple of things. One, right off the bat. Ms. Phelps says, you know, because these volunteers, they do a lot, a lot of work and they do a lot of work for us, for this city. And now we're asking them to do the work and try to find the money to do the work to benefit the city. And I, and I know, like she said, Fontana's $26. I think they just did it for paperwork reasons. But I know then we, when they don't have the money, then we do the community benefit fund. And I think, Councilman Robles, you brought it up one other time, like instead of doing all this back and forth, if I'm wrong, just have the city manager, if he could approve something like waivers like that. I think it was brought up a couple of years ago. So my thing is, can we, are looking to just waivers, fees for like, you know, we had the light up Grand Terrace, we had the county fair, we have, you know, the parade coming up, we have this, she's trying to establish this fair thing, I forgot the name of it. But it's for the benefit of the community. So why are we, somebody's taking initiative and using their hours and their time and their talent to benefit the community and it seemed like the city is always the roadblock for that. I would like to look into just having an overall waiver where the city manager could just say, okay, I'm just going to waive that fee so they're not stressing and contacting us, how do I do this and how do I do that? Or he could just have the, the right to look into it and do this for the benefit of the community, just like when we had the Christmas cruise and I, I'm sorry I didn't get to go on that fire truck, you know, I don't think anybody wanted me on that fire truck because they would have been sick, but that was a beautiful thing that was established. And, you know, the, the city lighting thing and then, you know, we have Grand Terrace Days and hopefully with the parade, you will bring back the old Grand Terrace Days like we used to. But I just want to have a thing where we look at the waiver fees for these community events. And I'd just like to look at if the city can do that.
I, I think through, city manager has, Duffy, he wanted it where it was kind of a, an annual thing, but it could also be semi-annual where they submit, you know, so the city manager can also see what kind of track worker they have and if it's judicious choice, you know, of the thing. And then probably if you didn't want something, then it can go on the agenda and then we could be the, the bad or the good guys. But just by incident might be a problem.
In general, I'm not supportive of, of fee waivers because of the direct impact it has on the general fund. I'd like to remind my colleagues that we paid a highly esteemed consultant to review all of our fees and present a report to this council that we adopted. And having gone through fee studies for the better part of my career, the study that was presented to this council that we approved was the best that it had ever seen in terms of the documentation associated with the fees that we charge. For years and years and years, Grand Terrace has subsidized virtually any activity that you care to shake a stick at. So when we approved that program, we were raising fees for the first time in decades, sometimes for the first time ever. So to backtrack and go in a different direction because someone has heartburn about a fee, and I don't mean that flippantly, but there's always going to be a request to waive fees or to reduce fees when, especially when someone is, is paying for a fee that they've paid for in the past, it was a fraction of the, of the current cost. But for the first time ever, and those funds that we anticipated receiving as a result of the fee increases have already been factored into our budget process by the city manager and the finance director. So to back out certain costs and certain fees, I think is not the right approach to take.
Yeah, this wasn't for all the fees. This is for special events for the city that's benefiting the city.
Understood, but we have a situation where there's a significant staff cost for these, for these events that are only partially recovered by the fee associated with that particular permit.
All right. So no second? To look at a fee waiver for a community event? To entertain it and to look deeper into it, see what it would cost and if we, the city can do it and give that.
You want to give the city manager the authority to waive fees or adjust the fees based on the?
On the event.
On the.
Mayor, I second it for future discussion, you know, I probably jumped the gun in terms of articulating my opinion, but, but if a council member wants something in general, I'm going to support it whether I, the idea is good.
We want to look at it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, first and a second, first, I mean, second by, Councilman Henderson, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, another thing is panhandling ordinance a violation. I don't think we have a panhandling ordinance. Panhandling is California code, it's against the law. I think it's code PC 647. And I know we worked with the businesses to put a sign up there, but I want to give our law enforcement the tools they need to help curtail panhandling. So if somebody does feel threatened or somebody does feel like they're, you know, somebody's standing out front, that law enforcement can be called instead of just saying, well, that's the way it goes. They could actually either enforce that, give the ticket to the person, which if they're transit, they probably not afford, but if they're coming from a certain business, then that business needs to be held accountable. But I want to look into panhandling ordinances and the violations. If anybody would like to second that. Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem? All right, last thing, I'm sorry, guys, this, I didn't, because this is supposed to be on my.
Promise.
Yeah, I promise.
Excuse me, Mayor, a motion passes unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is what happens when the mayor gets sick over the holidays.
Yeah, yeah, too many sugar cookies. So I had a thing on with the League of Cities and they talked about, and I know you guys read about Fontana vendors regulations. And, you know, they're confiscating, in Orange, City of Orange, they're confiscating vendors' carts who are not doing what's described by law for the business license slash, you know, health inspector license. And, and I know, because I'm getting called while I'm in South Carolina about the vendors coming up and it's the same ones over and over again. So I would like to look at an ordinance for the street vendor regulations and see what ordinance that are, what procedures we have in, in hands right now with the city and how we could educate those vendors on how to do it the proper way. But the ones who don't want to do it the proper way, which is 99.9% that I have in the Cal city, then we start enforcing this regulation and it's called confiscation and making sure, one, that we're protecting our brick and mortar businesses, two, we're protecting the public health, three, that we're not having, you know, a business open up in a residential neighborhood and causing more traffic and then, you know, harms way for people getting out of their cars, and four, to protect schools who have vendors that are set up during, you know, that part. So I would like to look at the ordinance for street vendors and the violations and what we can do as far as guidelines, as far as confiscation, ticketing, and set limits on where they could actually do the street vending because we had to follow California law. So that's my.
I second that.
Please vote.
The council should be aware that the mayor and I have had discussions about the city of Fontana situation. And so there's a lot to learn from what Fontana has done and how it's confronted these issues and the rules and regulations it's put in place. So we don't have to start from scratch. There's, there's a local municipality who's, whose efforts in this area will be beneficial to the city.
Okay, did it pass?
Motion pass unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. I really appreciate it. Sorry for being long-winded. So speaking of long-winded, city council communication, Councilman Henderson? Not saying that you're long-winded, I'm just saying we're getting ready to do this.
Nothing to report. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I just want to wish Happy New Year. I want to personally thank Christina and Brian who came out tonight. I mean, you guys are so into the community. Thank you for being here and Shad, you and your wife, too, and your, your cause is admirable. And Christine, I, I'm, I'm, want to see that fair happen, okay? And I'll, so I wish all the best with that. And, and before you run off, Mr. Sanchez, you always run off, before I get a chance to thank you, and I just want you to know that your words are not lost on us on their, the situation on the roads over there where you live. You've been here two or three times and complained about them, you know, we're, we haven't, we don't blow you off. We, we, we know who you are. And thank you for being here and please come back, all of you. Thank you for, for, for coming here and speaking up. I, and I just want to wish everyone a, a Happy New Year. And see you next.
Thank you. Councilman Robles?
So on the third, I attended the San Bernardino County Transportation Agency and I'm going to send you a set of slides. And what's going to be coming down from, from them is that discussion about changing the fee structure for the council governments. And I'm sure they'll be talking to our city manager about that. And there was 21 of us that voted for it and two that voted against. The city of Victorville and Hesperia were concerned that their citizens would not want to spend tax money on this effort. So I think, you know, the city manager, I think we need to weigh how much education we need, you need to do on us on that and if that's something you support, but that's what's going to be coming down the pack. We're going to have to, I think all the cities are going to have to by April decide how they're going to vote on it. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. One thing, OmniTrans, kind of piggyback thing. They're going to go in there, doing a study, see, I think it's like 300,000. But if you guys are not aware of it, for special needs, veterans, hospital trips and the buses aren't running, you could go with OmniTrans and go with Uber and OmniTrans will pay for the ride. Just to tell you, Grand Terrace is one of the most expensive Uber rides. Ours, everybody's, I think Redland's $14, ours is $57. So this is an OmniTrans initiative that they get it from the state and the federal government. So the city is not out of the money, but there's special requirements. So just pull up the OmniTrans website. So they mentioned that. You know, thank you for everybody who did all these special events and during Christmas and New Years and, you know, the big success toy drive that made a lot of kids, you know, happy. I mean, you know, 59 and 52 years ago, I was one of those kids who got a toy from the fireman. So that meant a big thing to me, you know, and then giving that out and it means a lot. You know, a toy can really change a kid, you know, it shows that somebody cares. And that's the big thing, the showing that we care, you know, this city cares. And, you know, thank you guys for staying here at the end because we do, like Councilman Allen said, we don't go on deaf words. We, deaf ears, we can only say so much during that consent calendar. So we make a mental note of it and we're, and we're doing what we can. And, you know, this is our city, too. And, you know, we're trying to do our best to make sure. And as Mayor Pro Tem said, that, you know, this state has changed and it's harder for law enforcement. Speaking of that, it's National Law Enforcement Day, too, isn't it, Lieutenant Lane?
I'm sorry.
Is it National Law Enforcement?
I'm, I'm not sure if it is.
It is.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I don't get out much anymore.
Thank you for protecting our city and, you know, it's, and, you know, the residents want to be protected. And this is our little city. This is our, our home. When you drive up that hill and you come here, you want to let your guard down. And it's unfortunate that we do have things coming in. And it's not only in, you might say, the Wallace House, but I also, there's residents here, too, that like, whoa, bad, I need to move or something. Or I hope they move or, you know, but they're just everywhere. And it's when you stand up and you do what's right and you don't be quiet and you voice your opinion and you protect the innocents, that's what we need to do. Be that voice for somebody who's afraid. Be that stance, just like when that guy was unfortunately beating that lady in the parking lot. And I stood up to him, but then again, you know, nothing went through. But not turn another cheek and standing up and making sure, you know, the harm's way. I mean, it's, it's, it was sad to hear that, you know, the panhandler pulled a knife and the guy had a carry concealed. But there also was a 15-year-old who robbed Chevron with a knife. Goes back to family values and that's what we need to stand for. And when we do these community events, it brings families there. So anyway, thank you and I'm sure you guys had a great time on the fire truck. Me and my wife were envious of you, but, you know, we didn't want to get you sick. So hopefully next year, we'll be able to go on the fire truck. Okay, and we have a city manager communications?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, so we got a recessed closed session. Recessioned closed session and then, so for, where's my notes for what we got a recessed for? Oh, here it is. I got to turn the page. So we're going to go on closed session conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to the government code, section 54956.9, case name Ben Elzenberg? Ilber? Individual, city of Grand Terrace, case number CIV SB 22000100. Individual, City of Grand Terrace, case number CIV SB 22000100. So, so good night, God bless, and thank you guys for coming out. Recession to close session.